I'd like to call to order the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. The best summary will have the invocation by Pastor John Martin of the Victorville First Assembly of God, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Victorville Police Captain, Mark Taylor.
I'll bow your head, please. Lord, thank you for this evening, and thank you for the city. Touch each of our minds and hearts this evening as we try to live within your light and your reason, not our selfish hands.
Thank you. We now have two presentations. Well, tonight, it's my pleasure on behalf of the City Council and the employees of the City of Victorville to present to Mark this plaque for his service to the City of Victorville. As you know from the last meeting of those of you that were here, he is moving on to administrative...
Crime lab.
Crime lab way, yes. And we have a new captain coming into Victorville, but Mark has been with us. He has served the city very well. And we have a plaque presented to Captain Mark Taylor in recognition of your service and dedication to the citizens of Victorville. We are indebted to you for your contribution in making Victorville a safer city. Victorville City Council, June the 2nd, 2009. Mark, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you. I really, this is really a surprise. I thought it was going to be the Public Works, but anyway, I just want to thank, you know, the council for their tremendous support of the police department. You guys have truly shown that you are dedicated to public safety, and together we've done some really great things, and I'm sure that that will continue. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I also have a proclamation for Public Works Day, and I have two employees for my Public Works Department to accept the proclamation. And what we're doing is we're going to declare Public Works Day, and I won't read all of the whereas, but the last part is, "Now there I, Rudy Cabralis, Mayor of the City of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the City Council in proclaiming June the 4th, 2009, as Public Works Day." And thank you very much for all your help. I know that the Public Works is always there for us, not just in the streets, but many of the other events that we do throughout the city. And I can tell you they're dedicated employees, hard-working employees, and very loyal to the city. And so it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the City Council and to thank you for your service.
The department would just like to thank the support of the City Council. We've been through you throughout the years, and also our Director, Mr. Jakar.
Thank you. And if you look at, when you're driving around town, you see our crews out there constructing sidewalks. And so the city is doing its share of the Public Works that needs to be done to keep our city beautiful and clean and the streets operable. Thank you. First item, this is item number one, which is a public comment. Public comments are restricted to three minutes, and I do have three cards, actually four cards. Anyone wishes to speak on their public comment, fill out your cards or in the foyer and bring it to, bring them to the city clerk. The first one I have is Alcatillo.
And back to the DIFs again, you guys are charging these people. When these people come in to put in a mobile home, why don't you make them put in a permanent foundation right away? You don't let them build a house without a cement foundation, because these people go five or six years without doing it, then it costs them three times as much to put in a permanent foundation. If you make them put it in when they put it, when they put the house in, it won't cost them anywhere near as much. Plus, some of these DIFs are through the roof. So either that or sign a contract with them when they come in saying that they know they have to put a permanent foundation in, and that if they don't want to put it in, let them sign a contract saying it, then it's their fault, and you got proof. Another thing, when you went to China, the Bank of America is the bank of this city, from what I've been told from the finance people. When you go back from China, you borrowed $3 million from a Chinese bank, Desert Community Bank owned by China. What was that about? And the business license thing, Mike Rothschild, that's the most ridiculous thing I ever heard of in my life. If I want to rent my house, I gotta come to you and get a business license, and then you gotta give me a talk about how I gotta do and how I gotta rent my house out? I've rented houses out before, and I never had any trouble, and I don't need you or anybody up there to tell me how to do it. I've never had a problem renting a house out before. The only places they do what you want to do is in Russia and Venezuela. You better, you better grow up.
Next is Jeanne Sillick.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Have a little bit of a complaint and don't know really what department would handle it, so I'm gonna toss it in your court. I live on a cul-de-sac. We have 12 homes. And on Tuesday, usually in the morning, right before lunch, I hear the street sweeper machine come down the street. It has a high whine, and he drives very, very slowly. And of course, the job of the street sweeper is to sweep along the curb. However, on my street, and I can show you this every day of the week, we have a little problem. And the problem is that in the 12 homes, many, many people, I would say at least half of the people, have done something to their garage so that the car won't go in the garage. It parks either in the driveway or it parks in the street, usually in the street. So when the sweeper comes around, he has to go around to park cars. And as I say, half of the people have cars in the street. It's only 12 homes. We're only getting about 50% of the value of the street sweeper because he can't sweep where the cars are parked. What's happened to the garages is that some people have converted them to playrooms. I have one neighbor who has a full-size pool table. You put that in a two-car garage, you can't get anything in there, not even, hardly get a motorcycle in. And we have another neighbor who uses his garage for storage, and it's full right to the door with packing boxes of some kind. So I wonder if you're cognizant of the fact that in some cities, and I used to live in Irvine, there are signs that says, "Don't park in the street on Tuesday because the street sweeper is coming on Tuesday, and if you park on the street, you might get a ticket." And sure enough, the police car would pick out a certain street and follow the street sweeper and issue citations. Now, back in 1994, they were 50 bucks. I imagine they're a little higher these days. But I'm wondering what can be done to have people pull their cars into the driveway and off the street? And I notice that, I'm not picking on my own street, this is all over the area that I live in, just two blocks before Eagle Ranch, and every street is a cul-de-sac, and I went into three or four of them, and I find the same situation. And I'm wondering if that's code enforcement or it's traffic control? I have no idea. Who would be the right people to say, "Can you please get the cars off the street at least on Tuesday so we can get a nice, clean street?"
Jeanne, your time's up, and we'll have the appropriate...
I was just gonna say, due to the high winds, we have a lot of debris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have David Lopez.
Good evening, everybody. My name's David Lopez, and if it hasn't brought, or been brought up recently or up in the High Desert, here it is. In the state of California, medical cannabis has become legalized. I'm a disabled person. I use medical cannabis. There's also many other disabled veterans, I'm also a veteran, disabled veterans and citizens as well. We have to drive down LA to go get our prescriptions. I don't feel it's fair. The state of California has passed the law. County of San Bernardino and San Diego tried suing the state of California, and to no prevail, they lost. It is coming, it is on its way. I've tried to ask the city if I could start opening up a store. I went and got my business license, my seller's permit. I'm working on my 501(c)(3) right now. It's a nonprofit organization, it's all controlled. Not anybody can come into this store and just get what they need. It's all, you have to be verified, certified, and so on. I'm asking that the city would consider, I don't know if you need to make regulations or something on this, but like I said, it's a state law. This city is in the state of California, and as, I'm no attorney, but I understand that we all have to follow the state laws. Also, I'm a, like I said before, I'm disabled. I had a job for 20 years, and a guy went through a red light and creamed me, and I no longer have a job because of that. No health insurance, no nothing right now. Try to get assistance through the state of California. Don't qualify, I have too much. I need to open up my own business and supply my own health insurance and everything else to provide for my family that I can't even get food stamps for right now. And so I'm trying desperately to get this going soon. And so I don't know what it's gonna take or what, but here I am, and I'm asking for some kind of guidance, or you guys to come up with some kind of regulation, and to get this thing going so that I can get medication up here for patients who need it up here as well as I do. And there's my point. And I'd like to say the street sweeping thing is fine with me the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Estelle Townsend.
Estelle Gonzalez Townsend, and I've been up here for, since '02, for six years. My neighbors have harassed me, have destroyed my trees, my flowers, my garden, and I have tried to get assistance from every agency you can name. I've been there and around and five times riding, and I haven't gotten anywheres. And this harassment has to stop. I am getting very impatient with these people. I have no idea what to do. If it's on account of race, it has to stop. My people were here before you guys went across the Atlantic Ocean to come over here. If you don't like our people, why don't you go back where you belong and leave California to California? I need these people to quit ruining my trees. I've got trees that are dying, roses that are dying, tomatoes that are dying. This has been going on for years, and I haven't gotten any help from anybody. And I don't know where else to go. And I know I should go to the supervisor's office. I've called them. I tried to get them to come out and see what I'm talking about, and none of them have tried to assist me in any way. I don't know where else to go, and so I thought I'd come here this evening. It breaks my heart to even leave my place. As soon as I turn around, they get in, jump the yard. I spent thousands of dollars on six-foot tangling fencing on three sides. I've got more, cameras, surveillance cameras, and yet they sneak in there and destroy my property, and I've done nothing to these people. And I'm 85 years old, and I thought that these years would be great, because they have up until the High Desert. I don't know who people think the High Desert belongs to. As far as I'm concerned, it belongs to everybody, not just a few people. And if they don't like what they see here, they better go back to the country they came from. I don't know where else to go other than to come over here and rage at you guys. And I am sorry I had to do that. I am very deeply sorry. I never thought I'd have to make such comments at my age and my state that I was born in. So if you can write me or call me or tell me where to go to get these people to stop harassing me at night, running in there, killing my roses, my trees. I got lab reports saying that the alepopine had sulfuric acid on it, and I'm trying to save it. My modesto ash had chemicals put in it, and I'm trying to save it. And my apricot tree, I think they got two, I'm not sure. So you tell me where to go.
Estelle, your time's up. Someone will contact you. You're in Mountview Acres. Okay. Well, now go to the regular agendas, and we have the Library Board of Trustees' agenda. revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
We have a consent calendar.
Through approval.
Next two agendas are the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Agenda, and Councilman Caldwell is the chair of those boards, so he'll do the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. I'll treat both agendas concurrently. There is a change on the consent calendar. We're going to add the companion item B, the Airport Authority Agenda, and we're going to add it from SCLRA. In addition, item four on both agendas are the same. They deal with the changing of the regular meeting times. We have corresponding resolutions, SCLA-A09-001 and 09-001 for SCLRA. So a motion would be in order for both consent calendars. And a motion for item four on both agendas dealing with the changing of the regular meeting times would be in order. That concludes the Airport Authority and the Rail Authority agendas.
Now move to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. Revision to the agenda.
On item number three, which is a public hearing item, the Director of Economic Development has requested that this item be continued to June 16th. So the public hearing should be opened and then continued to the meeting of the 16th.
Item number three is to request to adopt Resolution Number R09002. The Resolution of Victorville Redevelopment Agency approving the fourth five-year implementation plan for the Bear Valley Hook Boulevard redevelopment project area. There is a request to move the item to June 16th, but I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item number three or against? Now we'll continue the public hearing to June the 16th, 2009. A consent calendar on item number four. Move for approval.
Caldwell?
I clicked it. Clicked it. We have item number five, is a request to adopt Resolution Number R09003. This is the change in the bylaws to reflect the change in the regular meetings, establishing schedule for open and closed sessions. Motion? Item number six, request to adopt Resolution Number R09004, ratifying and authorizing the use of tech allocated from the Bear Valley Road redevelopment project for the purpose of housing on site of the project area. Are you motion?
Second.
Item number seven is to request to approve a silver sponsorship for the High Desert Opportunity 2009 event in the amount of $10,000.
For approval on that, just indicating also it's a reduction of 33% from the previous year.
A second. Next, we'll have the Victorville Water District Agenda. Any revisions?
No revisions.
We have a consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number four is a request to adopt Resolution Number VWD09007, which is the Resolution changing the regular meetings and establishing the schedule for open and closed sessions.
Approval?
Second.
Next is the City of Victorville Agenda. Visions?
No revisions.
Yeah, consent calendar, item number three.
Approval. Second. All.
Item number four is a request to adopt Resolution Number 09044. Again, this is establishing the dates, times, location of the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, establishing schedule for open and closed sessions.
Approval.
Item number five, request to adopt Resolution Number 09045 in title. Mr. Goff, do you have some information on it?
I don't.
The approval of a finders fee agreement between the City of Victorville and Global Power Supply. They are similar to ITM, which is an agreement you have. They basically are in the business of power equipment and have a non-exclusive agreement to try and market the power island related to our plant number two. And with council's prior direction, keep all of our options open.
I also noticed there was a waiver in there from inland on any problems they may or may not have perceived to be happening. I move for approval for Resolution 09-045.
Can I ask one question? Finders fee? Ed? Okay. Second.
Good question.
Item number six is a resolution, request to adopt Resolution Number 09039, and the resolution establishes a time and place for a public hearing on the sewer use fee. I'll move approval.
Second.
Item seven, is a request to approve a post amendment to the 0708 Propession 1B Plan, which is local streets and road improvements.
Second.
Councilmember Allman, I need a vote.
Item number eight is a request to approve a contract... Item number eight is a request to approve a contract of cooler construction in the amount of $343,051.91 for street improvements on Park Avenue and on Yacht Road. Item number nine, request to approve the Community Services Department master plan for parks and facilities. Move approval?
Second.
Item 10, is a request to approve resolution number 09042 entitled, is a resolution that authorizes the City of Victorville giving approval and to destroy certain records.
Second.
Number 11 is a request to approve resolution number 09040. This is revising and amending the bail schedule of the City of Victorville Parking Agency.
Second.
Item number 12, request to approve resolution number 09043. This resolution, excuse me, ratifying and authorizing the use of taxes allocated from the Bear Valley Road redevelopment project. Item 13, request council approval, amend the contract for services with Kobe Capital to $13,400 per month for an initial term of three months and a total term amount that exceeds one year.
Second.
Councilmember Allmond, may I get a vote from you?
That's the end of the regular items. We have item 14, which is presentation from council members.
I have none.
I'm just gonna make one short comment. Are we gonna get the water bills finalized once and for all? The paper, which is outback, was loaded with comments about our water bill and how we don't know how to handle it. It was a little embarrassing reading them.
I have.
I, it deserves an answer. We, we've got a lot of staff that's working on, on this and we need to make some major changes. Changes in the methodology and the way it's done and the computers and everything. Doing their best to make it work. Out of it by hand, it's not working. But having it replaced, it's gonna take quite an investment to make it right. We know we have to do it. We've been talking about it in the budget sessions in regard to procedures and the equipment that's needed and how to go about it. Making some internal changes that we have finalized, but we're just trying to make it work. I think we've concluded that what we were trying to do will not work. They in fact have to go back to herego. That may be the answer. Boys are doing their best, but it just doesn't. Equipment they have will not allow them to do the job, so we're doing our best to correct
Thank you.
Did have reportable action?
Yes, Mayor, we reported that after the, we came back in after the closed session and reported it.
That concludes the meeting. Thank you.